Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our legislative session for Borough Yatim, June 12, 2025. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, united in God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, please proceed with roll call, beginning with our esteemed mayor.
Mayor Roland Hittens. President Latoya Moreau.
President.
Vice President Leana Rowclaw.
Present.
Counselor Nicole Beatty.
Present.
Counselor Antoinette Truheart is not present this evening. Counselor Michael Trent.
Present.
Counselor Jesse Peets.
Present.
And Counselor Lauren Johnson is not present this evening. We have Kyle Miller from our solicitor's firm, Kill Kenny Law.
Present.
We have Nafis Nichols, our finance director.
Present.
Yolanda Hughes, our tax collector, is not present this evening. And we have Megan Tadaro from Pinoni Engineering.
All right. Next up, we will move on to our citizens forum. I think I'll start with Joe Moore Richard.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I have just two items I wanted to address. I live on Rundell and McDay. There have been several accidents on that corner. There is signage that tells anyone that's driving up McDay that it is a dangerous intersection. My car has been hit twice. The pole, the light pole was just recently hit and replaced. So when I hear about enhancing public safety, I read the newsletter. I would like to see speed bumps on Rundell. It is high-traffic area. Those cars are speeding up Rundell. You can't put a light there because the school is there and there is a stop sign on Rundell. So when we talk about public safety, would that be considered public safety having speed bumps? What is the process and how long does it take? So as a taxpayer, the other question is, is there money in the budget for those things? The second thing that I would want to address, I wouldn't think it goes to public works. There is a lot of litter. Kids walking by, back and forth to school, even adults. I am constantly picking litter up from my yard. Is it feasible to have trash cans strategically placed throughout neighborhoods that would attach themselves to a pole where it would invite people to throw their litter instead of on people's laws? Is that something that is in the budget? So I read under Chapter 220, Property Maintenance and Housing Standards, under K7, it states occupied private premises. No person shall throw, deposit, dump, or allow to occur litter on any occupied private premises within the borough, whether owned by such person or not, except that the owner or person in control of private premises may maintain authorized private receptacles for the collection of litter in such a manner that litter will be presented from being carried or deposited by the elements upon any street, sidewalk, or other public place or upon private premises. So my question is, I know that a litter law is not going to be enforced. We're not going to use our police officers to run behind people to catch litter. So my solution would be, can we put trash cans strategically located in our neighborhoods to prevent the litter? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have JT.
Good afternoon, counsel. I'm not going to be long. I've been talking to friends in the neighborhood and we are concerned about making sure that we stay on our budget. Also, in reference to the previous administrative members, we're concerned about, it's been brought to my attention that there's people that has not paid, should I say, the borough money that was due. And if individuals from the past are on council, is it some kind of way that we can enforce a rule requiring that members from the past on council are required to make payments on money that they owe? I have, I can submit this if you want me to. That's my concern.
Okay.
I would like to see that, please. I'll share this with the rest of counsel, so you can take a look as well.
So there's no, there, we, we, we have open record, so it's no secret that there's a former counselor that owes a significant amount of money to the borough. And we have made provisions to recoup those, those funds. It is not fair that the taxpayers absorb those costs and our finance director is aware and will make sure that it happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like this back? We'll make sure he gets back to you.
Make sure everybody have a look at it. Full transparency.
Next, we have Anna.
Good evening, everyone. The main thing that I want, the main thing that I want to address tonight is expenses. We're now almost halfway through the year, so I want to make sure that, we make sure that we stay on budget for the end of the year. I also wanted to ask if, I know that the finance director is probably doing a forecast with regards to where, where we currently are, what the run rate is. If there's any way that that could also be shared with the residents, so we can see. Maybe it could possibly be put on the borough website, so we can take a look and make sure that we will end the year on, on, but on target. There is a lot of concern with regards to residents saying, we want to make sure that we're on target with regards to the budget because we don't want to, and I know that none of the counselors want to, to raise taxes, but we know that there's a lot of expenses that are going along. The William Penn School District is probably going to be raising taxes at the end of this year for next, outside of our, you know, foray, but we want to really try and minimize the impact with regards to the residents. The other question is with regards to our infrastructure. We know that there is an aging infrastructure. We've been taking a look with regards to grants. We've also been taking a look with regards to other ways. Is there any way, and I think the finance director had addressed this previously with regards to being proactive with regards to other ways, instead of addressing it piecemeal, one way of taking a look at it so that we're really being, doing what's best with regards to the, for the borough? And I think the only other thing that I had is sometimes the finance director gives a presentation to the residents. If there's any way that we could actually do that again this year, and I'm not quite sure what the timing of that would be. I don't know if it's usually around this time or if it's a little later in the year, but they're the main things that I wanted to address tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Madam President, the mid-year review is scheduled and slated for July. And I will say, the only concern that I have, and I did mention this in the last public meeting, was the fact that we had to do a refund for, you know, that was significant. It was over a quarter million dollars that we didn't anticipate because a large parcel in the borough filed a reassessment with Delaware County and they approved it. And that was something that was not budgeted. So we are working through our projections to modify the budget to, you know, absorb that quarter million dollars that we weren't anticipating this year. So that is the only concern that I have right now, and we're still working through it.
Thank you. And our budgeting process typically begins around October, right?
August.
August? Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Madam Vice President.
Just so I'm clear, Mr. Nichols, you said the mid-year review is scheduled for sometime in July?
Correct, yes.
Okay. When would you have the exact date?
Well, we normally do it at this session, the legislative session.
Okay.
At the legislative meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Francis.
Good evening, Madam President, counselors, mayor, and Mr. Nichols and Mr. Ralphie Kaye. Residents, how you doing? I missed them before. Good evening. I've come to piggyback on what Mr. Providence had mentioned. I wanted to find out, is there any kind of regulation or procedure regarding the use and the use and the issuance of borough equipment, i.e. as laptops, cell phones, iPads, they're used for assigned duties and functions only borough-related? Do we have a policy for that?
We do.
Okay. Can we, is it going to be enforced? That's the main thing. I guess my key thing is, and everybody's looking at, is accountability, responsibility, and those funds that were spent were taxpayers' money. So I just want to make sure we have something in place for that.
Absolutely. So the, the only reason that the monies weren't recouped before was that once the administration changed, then the rules were no longer enforced. And then once it, once order was restored, the public took action and voted that person out. But now, since they are going to be returning to council, we can pick up right where we left off.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chris.
Claire Johnson?
Good evening to all.
Good evening.
Well, I guess this is a piggyback on everybody because mine is a piggyback as well. And I thought that maybe it was a legal question to ask, was there a statute of limitation for someone who abused borough-issue property, such as a phone or an iPad? And should they be given another one, a phone or an iPad, without paying the borough's bills? This should not come on taxpayers' backs. This is not what general funds is for. This is not what taxpayers pay their taxes to do. And the other thing is, private parties, abuse of your power as a counselor, when I have to pay for a community park, if I want to do something at a community park, should a counselor or an employee get that privilege because of their power? And should that too be rectified?
All right.
Madam Chair.
Madam Vice President. I'm intrigued as well with respect to the legal aspect of it. With respect to recouping funds that's owed, but because so much time has passed, is it really feasible to do?
It's a good question. I have not reviewed that specific device provision within, however that was arranged. I would assume if there was, if there was no financial obligation and it was property of the borough, there might be something, you know, along the lines of a contract claim or something along, along those lines. But once again, I would have to review that more thoroughly to provide a well-reasoned response.
Okay. Let's get, let's get a review started.
You got it.
All right. Thank you.
I believe I know with the one bill that circulated prior, like Counselor Madam President said, we actually didn't bill that. So Mrs. Solicitor, I don't know if that holds any weight of merit, but we did bill that.
So there was, there was a request made for reimbursement?
Yes. And then, like she said, the administration changed, so with the number of, of.
Sure.
Right.
Madam Chair, my question is, along those lines, so we get a stipend, and this is really directed towards the solicitor, we get a stipend as counselors. I believe that it would be in the best interest of the borough to hold on that, to that stipend until that is paid. And I don't know if we could legally enforce that, but I think that should be something we should consider.
So that, that's what we were going to do. We were going to garnish the, that, that was the process, that if you, you know, the bill was issued and if you don't pay it, then it will be garnished. But then administrations changed, there are a lot of different things happened and those things weren't enforced and didn't occur. So.
Right. We do want to make sure that the people know that there's a possibility that we may not be reimbursed due to legal reasons, right? But we don't know until the solicitor do his due diligence and just review the matter in full, right? We're going to do everything possible to make sure we get reimbursed. However, if there's something legally that we cannot do, we just can't do it. But that doesn't mean we don't want to, but we're just not legally able to do. So we're going to leave that, charge the solicitor with that task to review and inform us.
All right. We are moving on to our, is there, if anyone else is wishing to speak for citizens forum, then it needs to be done at the microphone. I see hands, but we need to make sure to go to the mic and adhere to our three minutes. Well, three of you are under three minutes, so.
I think I was under three.
Everyone was under three, but we want to make sure that we, yes.
Okay. My, my question is, if there is a statute of limitation, will she be issued another iPhone or to do the same thing again?
That's a great question and something for us to consider.
So this may not be something you can answer, but I'm curious. How could someone be re-elected to that? Back to council, back to council, because this is an integrity thing for me. And I would think if they've abused a privilege and now the borough is trying to get that money back and maybe it's, it's not possible legally? In all good conscience, how come we didn't know, or maybe we did and I didn't know, and she was even allowed, or he was even allowed to run again? I, I take issue with that. That's integrity.
It is. And it was, it was never a secret. It was posted in a lot of different places outside of here. And it was spoken about on this council floor as well, because it was a debt that was owed to the borough, so.
Madam President and Solicitor, I just have one question. Even if we can't recruit the money from the past, can we have a document saying accountability and responsibility signed before you were issued it, so you know upfront? If you do anything, this, I will say, if you do anything with the phone or whatever, that you're going to be held responsible, upfront, that you sign it, that you know, notarized document? Could that happen?
Should, should counsel choose to implement such a policy? Absolutely.
Thank you.
She should not have. She don't have to sign anything. She should have.
All right. Keep going. I ain't banging the gavel tonight. Next up, we have consideration for the May 8, 2025 caucus meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Hearing none, can we proceed with the roll call vote?
President Moreau.
Yes.
Vice President Rowclaw.
Yes.
Counselor Tru, I'm sorry, Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Next up for consideration are the May 15, 2025 legislative meeting minutes.
So moved. Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Hearing none, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Moreau.
Yes.
Vice President Rowclaw.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, the motion carries. And next up, we have our mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. My report does stand as submitted. I do have a couple of things that I do want to underscore. Do want to note that we did hold our second mayor's forum on last week, Thursday, June 5th, at Borough Hall. And the borough received a special award from the Pennsylvania Lead Free Promise Project, also the children's first organization, as well as the Delaware County Health Department. We were awarded a distinction of being one of the first municipalities in this area, in this Delaware Valley area, to ban lead, lead paint in our municipality and our schools. And for that, I believe that Borough Council deserves a round of applause. I want to thank the Borough Councilors for their support and attendance, as well as the department heads. And we had Fire Marshal Vincent Zapacosta give a report, as well as our new Fire Chief, Shahid Summers, and doing, to acknowledge their, their presentation as well. We did hold a public safety meeting Saturday, May 31st, via Zoom. The next one will move up from the 28th to the 21st, which will be next Saturday. All residents are welcome to attend via Zoom. The instructions are on the website, if you log onto that icon. Second, thirdly, the long-awaited renovation of Church Lane and McDay Boulevard intersection was completed by PennDOT almost two weeks ago. It seems to be going well so far, but it deserves further monitoring to see how effective it is. I have noticed that it has slowed down the traffic so far, and there's a lot more traffic signals for an allowance, systematical allowance to confu, to alleviate the confusion and the gridlock at, at that intersection. So, so far, it's looking good. Not a, probably not a panacea, but it is, it's a big improvement. Election of May 20th went well. We didn't have any, any hiccups, public safety-wise. I do want to comment on the, the trash cans that was noted and the speed bumps, something that we're looking at in the borough with the Police Department, Engineering. They're speeding all over the borough. They're speeding Bailey Road, they're speeding Rundell, they're speeding on Cypress, they're speeding all over the borough. And we have to really take a systematic look at that because we can't have speed bumps everywhere. But I don't know if the chief could, or you could comment on that on your report or now? Yeah, go ahead.
Essentially, they have to, it's a process. They, they have to have an engineering review for speed bumps. And I know then it affects liquid fuels. That was another talk, because PennDOT, which we've learned, PennDOT just wants traffic to flow. They don't want to stop traffic. So anything to impede traffic, PennDOT will remove from liquid fuels, correct? They'll.
There are certain types of speed bumps that don't, that's really.
So it's definitely going to be a traffic study. And it's something that we're going to have to have an engineering study do for.
Is that something that we want to move forward with? We can do that. I know that, I've also been talking with Catherine about some other solutions, other funding as well. But as far as speed bumps go, yes, PennDOT determines the type, the distance from intersections, the width, all that kind of stuff, because they make sure that they're pliable and it's going to be maintained with your road department.
Okay. Right. It's an ongoing process. Thanks. Do want to comment on the suggestion from our resident just now on trash cans? Trash cans to prevent, the, the conventional wisdom is more trash cans, less trash, and maybe it, the trash issues are resolved. Not so. I could tell you that the 700 block, we had a lot of, and in other areas, when in 700 block, we installed, I believe, four or five trash cans, big trash cans, a couple years ago. Did it help? Yeah, a little bit, somewhat. But people are who they are and what they are today, and people, even if they have trash cans, will just, they're used to throwing trash on the street. And it doesn't necessarily regulate behavior. So that assumption doesn't necessarily hold true. It can help. It, it helps somewhat, but it doesn't eliminate it or help to the extent that we would expect if people coming up don't have that behavior or haven't been disciplined to not litter. The people just throw trash through the window. I've seen it. They throw a big McDonald's thing and just roll down their window as they're driving. And there are people who will, will walk and see the trash can and just, I've even stopped some people. And the trash cans there, it doesn't necessarily regulate behavior. I think when, and back in the day, more people were more fastidious with that, but you have folks today that are just used to littering, and it doesn't necessarily, helps a little bit, but it's not a panacea. I just want to put that out there. By, what should I say? By trial and error and practice. Police staffing, we are up, we are, we do have the 20 officers that were budgeted. There is an officer that's retiring in, in August, and I believe we, we have submitted, we want to go to the civil service list, right, to, to, to fill that. Yeah, one on the list, okay? That is, oh, yeah. On Saturday, we have our long-awaited Flag Day, and I'm not going to steal Nicole Beatty's thunder, or she's going to really strangle me if I do. But so we'll wait for her recreation committee report. But I can say or add that Saturday is also, there is something going on nationally of a No Kings Rally all over the area, all over the, the United States. And there, there are rallies, I understand, that's, that's planned in Delaware County, media, some other places. I'm not entering the political aspects of it, but from, strictly from a public safety standpoint, I believe we've made all the necessary arrangements to, to keep the event of Flag Day safe. It's an all-day event. We don't anticipate any issues. I don't see us on the map for one of the rallies, although there are neighboring municipalities that will be ground zero for, for those types of rallies. So we should be safe. I just want to assure the Yatim residents that we, we should be okay. Chief, do you want to comment any on that? Okay. He'll, he'll, he'll maybe, yes. All right? Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you so much.
I'm done. I'll pick up the food.
So next up, we have our manager's report.
Thank you. Do you want, do you want?
Is it, do you have, do you have a report? And I'll do the.
No, not, not separate from the motion.
Okay. So up for consideration, we have the hiring of Veronica Redden to the role of receptionist slash co-clerk slash hall coordinator at the annual salary of $42,500, effective June 23rd, 2025, pending successful completion of a background check. Is there a motion?
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded, given that this is the person of matter, we will proceed with our roll call vote.
President Moreau.
Yes.
Vice President Rowclaw.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Trent.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
This vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Up next, we have consideration of the hiring of Lamont Collins Jr. to the role of co-director at an annual salary of $70,000, effective June 23rd, 2025, pending successful completion of a background check.
So moved.
Having been moved and properly seconded. Having been moved and properly seconded, given this is a personnel matter, we will move to our roll call vote.
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Rowclow?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. The motion carries. Up next for consideration, we have entering into an agreement with Civic Plus for code enforcement permitting software, effective immediately. So moved.
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question?
Madam Chair.
Madam Vice President?
I would like for Mr. Cave to give a brief overview with respect to the software.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Civic Plus is widely used in the area. A lot of our neighboring municipalities also use this particular software. We are looking to make the Code Department a little bit more nimble by being able to, for example, write violations, citations in the field, as well as automated permitting process, which will allow contractors and vendors to pay permits online versus having to mail it in. It just creates a much better experience for all parties, residents, a much faster turnaround time for projects that are improving their residences and businesses.
Okay.
Wasn't for me, for the people.
Yeah, sure.
All right, thanks. So, my question would be, is there cost associated? Will it end up being revenue neutral because money?
So, it does. The initial first-year investment is $28,500, which is of the four vendors that we have quotes from for the exact same production is the most cost-effective out of the four. We anticipate being able to greatly reduce paper and ink. We have a very slow folder-paper-driven process currently. And then the annual investment is $16,000.
You said annually is $16,000 after that?
Yes, ma'am.
What does our current software cost us?
Our current software, it costs a little over $4,000. It does not unfortunately perform any of the automation. It's more of just an enter. Give you a perfect example. Our enforcement officers in the field have to come back, write citations on paper, on paper triplicate, type them out, print them out, a very slow process, mail them to the court. This new software will give us an automated, direct from the field to the court process, which, real-time enforcement is important. It's kind of like parenting with a child, like being able to address a situation quickly and efficiently is really important and would really help our Code Department operate a little bit better for the people.
So, it sounds like we'd be able to write more citations in less time?
Yes.
So, that would be increasing the revenue there?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I have another...
Mr. Trent?
Yeah, I know it says take effect immediately, but with the turnaround and putting everything in place, wouldn't you think it actually would be online?
So, we anticipate a three-month onboarding process. We will still have the current process in place in the meantime. But, yeah, I anticipate about a 90-day onboarding process.
Madam Vice President?
What about storage?
It's cloud, great question. Cloud storage, it's limitless, it costs nothing for cloud storage, at no extra cost to us, and unlimited users as well.
Any purge, purge time, purge date?
No.
Okay.
Is Mr. Collins familiar with this type of software, or something similar?
Yes. The municipality that he works at now does have something similar. He, I did speak to him yesterday. He's aware of Civic Plus. He's used, he's very confident with software. He says that's his forte, and we would also work very closely together with him to make sure that our code officers are using it most effectively and efficiently.
All right. Without further question, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Rowclow?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
All right, that vote is unanimous. The motion carries. Up next for consideration is the adopting of Ordinance Number 2025-008, limitation on vehicles parked under tarp or other covering. So moved.
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question?
Madam Chair. Just a brief summary, please.
Yes. This, one thing that we are seeing a slight uptick in is vehicles parked on public streets, kept under a tarp or other covering. This ordinance would limit the timeframe that owners are able to park their vehicles on public streets, limited to 48 hours. It also clarifies that police officers also have the right of inspection for vehicles parked under tarp on public streets, as well as reminders that just because it's under a tarp, it still has to be moved appropriately for street cleaning and things like that.
All right. Can we move to our roll call vote?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Rowclow?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. The motion carries. Next up for consideration, we have adopting Ordinance Number 2025-005, titled "The Adoption of the Master Fee Schedule," repealing Chapter 150, Article 4, Title Fee Schedule. Seconded. Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Brief overview?
Yeah, brief overview. This isn't changing any of the listed fees. We see in our ordinances that, over the years, councils initiate and approve permit fees and things like that in an ordinance. We are going to, we're hoping to take those out, because those are, a lot of those old fees are still listed in the ordinances. So, we're going to move those from the ordinances to a master fee schedule to make it clearer for residents and vendors to be able to know exactly how much things cost in real time.
Can I just nitpick for one minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Considering we are in the month of June, with Juneteenth, are we moving away from words like "master"? Is it just me?
No.
It could be just me. Okay.
Well, we heard what you used.
Primary?
Could be primary, or just the fee schedules.
The 2025 fee schedule.
It just has to be a fee schedule.
And we start to put the date on it, then...
And then, this is not part of listening to the ordinance, but some of the recommendations...
The prior one was titled "Fee Schedule."
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need a master?
We do not. We don't need a master.
All right, let's just have a fee schedule.
No, I like the, and then at budget time, I think the recommendation was each year council will just, you know, review, review the fees and authorize it at budget time for the next year. So, if there are any changes, just to review, evaluate, make any changes, but we have it all in one shot, and not have to go through all the ordinances defined and change them.
Fee schedule is appropriate.
I like it.
Fee schedule works. Thank you. Can we proceed with our roll call vote on the fee schedule?
Yes, ma'am. President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Rowclow?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Sorry. Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. The motion carries. Up next for consideration is the approval of block party application for 400 Cypress on Saturday, June 21st, with the rain date of Sunday, June 22nd.
So moved.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Hearing that, I would like to just let the audience know that there are requirements for, within the application that is submitted a certain number of days in advance, that the Public Works Department, Police Department, and Borough Manager and Code Department have all looked into it, and the recommendation comes to us once. All of those things are complete. So, with that being said, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Rowclow?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. The motion carries. Also on the application is input from the surrounding residents that would be affected. Up next is consideration for the approval or denial of the handicap parking application at 1032 Stacks or Avenue. So moved.
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's approval or denial, so we have to pick one.
We have to pick one.
Are we voting yes, or, I was thinking we're voting yes or no? Approval or denial?
Oh, okay.
Right?
Yeah, you can do that way, or that's another way of voting.
Okay. So, I would ask that you either vote yes or no, since it's the approval or denial. Okay?
So, yes would be the approval, correct?
Yes would be the approval, no would be the denial. Everyone clear?
Okay.
All right. Can we move with our vote?
President Monroe?
No.
Vice President Rowclow?
No.
Counselor Beatty?
No.
Counselor Trent?
No.
Counselor Peets?
No.
Right there. Vote is unanimous. That motion carries. And just for clarification for the public, this was a reconsideration, and none of the material facts had changed. Next up, we have our Solicitors' Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, working, as I mentioned last meeting, as things are picking up with the abatement claims, working with the Borough Manager and the Code Department to ensure that the notification requirements, documentation are being maintained and compiled in case any further action is required. So, I have some familiarity with the Civic Plus platform, and I think it will certainly help to streamline things. And I think the cloud-based access makes, there's a lot less loss in translation and a lot less to keep, and everyone can sort of access those documents, which makes things especially helpful from a timeline perspective, when they only have a few months to get these done. Additionally, continuing to monitor some ongoing litigation, one of which is probably going to be heard prior to the end of this month, so I'll keep council apprised of any developments there. And just communicating with opposing council and the parties, and trying to compile, again, responses, responded document requests and things of that, like. Last week, I attended a few MDJ summary appeals in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas on behalf of the Borough, and we also have a couple scheduled for next week. So, again, working with the Borough Manager and the initiating officers, and hopefully to put together the scheduling and documentation for the witness testimony that would be, can represent the Borough's best interests in the courtroom. Those are fairly straightforward and not especially time-consuming, or it's not a very heavy lift. They're generally fairly easy to deal with. And then, lastly, just continuing a clear line of communication with the Borough Manager in hopes of answering any questions, concerns of council. And I will certainly look into the Borough-owned electronic device policy and make some suggestions moving forward, once I get, receive the details, some of the background information. And maybe early next week, something like that, I can provide some answers on those, on that topic, so. And thus concludes my report. Thank you. Oh, yes, and we did, council did meet an executive session this evening to discuss personnel.
All right. Thank you very much. Our Tax Collector's Report?
Good evening, all. For the month of May, there were 125 bills paid, I'm sorry, 121 bills paid. Real estate taxes collected $169,256.93. Borough trash, $37,620. Borough store, $55,242, for a grand total of $262,118.93. That ends the report.
Thank you. And next up, we have our Engineers' Report.
Good evening. The first action item I have, actually, it's the only action item, I have just have updates after this, is regarding the road program for this year. We put two roads out to bid, and the project opened this morning. We had a budget of $100,000. There were two bids received. The low bidder is AF Damon, which we worked for, or worked with previously. They were the contractor last year, and bids came in at $100,369.50. So, we do recommend award of that bid if you have any questions specific to that project. And this will all be under liquid fuels as well.
All right. So, we have consideration of awarding the 2025 road program to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Damon.
AF Damon, yeah. AF Damon. I'm sorry about that. I told Mike he has to cut it back by like a foot.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Having been moved and properly seconded on the question?
Which roads or streets will be improved during this program?
It will be Yaden Avenue between McDade and Allen, and then it will be Parkview Boulevard between South Longacre and Angora.
Madam Vice President?
Oh, what was the total amount again? I'm sorry.
And it is a little few dollars for the record, not general fund dollars, so it's a state entitlement.
All right. Can we move with our roll call vote? No more questions.
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Rowclow?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Peets?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. The motion carries.
Great. I just have two other updates. They are on grants that we have discussed previously. I just wanted to make sure, because they are due this month. They do not require resolutions, which is why there's not an action item on your agenda. However, the first one is the Growing Greener Grant, which is associated with the Blundstone Run Stream Restoration. You've heard that come up multiple times. We're still trying to supplement some of the funding that we already have in place. So, that will be for the Blundstone Run Stream Restoration. That is due June 20th. The second one is the Arlie Grant Application, which is for signal battery backup throughout the Borough, and that is due June 30th.
All right.
Is there any questions for me?
I do have a question.
Madam Vice President?
It's my understanding there was a meeting with residents for Church and McDade?
Yes.
Just a brief summary with respect to how that meeting went?
Yeah. I will, I was not in attendance at the meeting, and I'll do the best I can, but I will look to Mike to supplement if I miss anything here. So, we discussed the One Way parking. There were some resident concerns about parking within the striping that was added for the One Way. We did confirm that residents have the ability to park within the striping, behind the delineators. That is all good. PennDOT approved that. There's no issues there. There were some additional discussions on delineators and reflectors at the One Way. The ground is striped, but the actual reflectors that show at night when your lights hit them have not been installed yet, so that will also be going in. And then the quick curb, the vertical delineators was not installed on quick curb, which will also be installed as well. That's everything up at that intersection. At the following intersection, close to West Cops Creek, there was some resident concerns regarding parking that was, there was a small amount of parking eliminated as part of this project. We have since taken a look at that and found a solution where we can narrow the striping that was the median there. It was a striped median, not an actual fixed median. So, we are reviewing that to eradicate the striping that was put in, so the parking will go back in place. We already have a solution for that, and the contractor is aware of that.
Okay. The signage at that intersection of West Cops Creek, it's kind of small, and one of the signs is actually being blocked by the tree branches from the park. So, are those issues being addressed? In addition to crosswalk, because I noticed there's no crosswalk for... In addition to crosswalk, because I noticed there's no crosswalk for the pedestrians when they're trying to, when they get off the trolley and cross over the, from that island.
So all of, this portion of the one-way is the Phase One with all of West Cobbs. Part of the larger, really, TA set aside project that is coming will add, that's where there will be a pork chop, so that there's a stop point in the middle for pedestrians crossing the road, since it's a really long wide width. That is when the crosswalks will be installed, and the overall pedestrian access at that intersection will be greatly improved as well.
Okay.
So that's all part of Phase Two. The signage I will look into, my understanding is that all the signage was installed, but I will look into it, and maybe if we can get a branch cut down, that would be.
Well, it's from Fairmount Park, the branches, it's stemming from the-
It's on the park side?
It's on the park side. But I do still, the, the signage is just small in that area, and I see that there's temporary, I guess, no turn signs there, so I don't know what the final outcome with the signage is going to be, because you can't keep those temporary signs there forever.
No, right now, all the temporary signs are to notify people that there is a change in a traffic pattern. You'll notice, we just checked before this, if you go on Google, it says that the road is closed for the one direction. Ideally, that's to prevent, so if you are using your GPS, it will not let you go that direction, it will not direct you in that direction. But the temporary signs will not stay forever, so we'll double check the signage.
So crosswalks is Phase, Phase Two?
Correct.
Okay. And that's coming later this year?
That is being bid later this year. Installation is next year.
Oh, okay. You did say pork chop.
Pork chop, yeah. It's the, it's an island pork chop.
Okay.
Pork chop?
Pork chop.
Yeah, so I believe what she said is-
As soon as she said it, I saw the shape.
It's the shape of it.
I know, if we come up with any name, just to confuse them.
That's fine, all right. Mayor?
Yeah, Madam President, just a follow-up question on the signs. There are people, some people that's still going the other way of the one-way, I guess they have to get used to it, or they've tested the system. I actually stopped one person who was coming the, the wrong direction of the hell from that triangle. So, and, and I've done, perused the area, gone, you know, several times, and that mouth coming up, but, but the tri, there, there is a temporary sign. What is it going to look like when we have the permanent sign? To, to make sure that it's more clear and permanent, that people know not to come up?
I, I'm going to go back and double check exactly if there's still signage missing, or if maybe there are some supplemental signs that we can add.
Yeah, I don't think it's sufficient right now.
Okay, I'll take a look. And we're talking from West Cobbs coming up?
The one-way is east, I'm talking a lot of people going west, against the grain of the one-way. And I see those temporary signs, but it's not sufficient. And can we do like arrows, like points, can we put arrows in a road?
I think that is already proposed, so.
Is it part of the proposal?
Not down at West Cobbs, down at the other.
I think that would be helpful.
So there's, there's arrows on West Cobbs telling you you can only go straight, but maybe that is?
Yeah, if we had arrows. Yeah.
You can't, more, okay. Let me confirm exactly what's, if there's signage still missing, and exactly what's there, and we'll revisit that.
All right, that's all I have, thanks.
I have one more, I'm sorry.
Madam Vice President?
The 1,000 block of Yaden Avenue, when will that pavement be completed? I believe we were told it was going to, uh, start in the spring.
The paving that's part of this road program?
For Yaden Avenue?
Yes. So after tonight, now that these contracts are awarded, we will get them executed and get them to the contractor as soon as possible. I, I will move to get them to the borough, get them executed, and get PennDOT's approval. I, I don't, I don't want to give you a timeline, because I am at the mercy of PennDOT and the contractor at this point, but I'll make sure that they move as quick as possible on our end.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too. All right, next up, we have our finance report, and up for consideration is the accounts payable list for June 2025.
So moved?
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Hearing that, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roclow?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Pete?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Next up, is there anything from ordinance and zoning?
Uh, no, nothing additional.
Oh, I'm sorry, I put a check value on my paper, finished it in my head. Next up for consideration, we have the May 2025 Cash Balance Report. So moved?
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Hearing that, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe?
Yes.
Vice President Roclow?
Yes.
Counselor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Trent?
Yes.
Counselor Pete?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries. For Public Works?
Um, I'm sorry, ordinance and zoning?
Oh, he said that there was nothing from-
Yeah, I, I think he was mistaken.
There's the written report, I don't have a much to add to it.
Do you want to give a brief overview with respect to the RDA?
Okay.
With respect to the blight, you think the people would like to know about that? Oh, sure. Okay, yes.
You know, we've been, back in, I think in the January session, Counsel approved the intergovernmental agreement, which allows the borough to work directly with the county, use county funds to address blight. Vacant homes, abandoned homes, that tough house on that, on your block that you look at quite often. Counselwoman Roclow and I met with county officials and, with the RDA, and are addressing two properties specifically. They are engaging developers who will actively come in through a conservator process. Conservator is, is a, is a legal process where a judge will oversee the terms of a redevelopment of specific properties. So we believe that this could be a great tool for the borough to help us address blight. These homes are a little battered, backing taxes, and, you know, raccoons falling out of them and everything, but I can't think of anything else to add.
What happens to the properties after they are developed?
Yeah, I thought you were going to deliver this part, that's why, because you did such a great job with it. So, so the, once they are redeveloped, they will be sold for primary homeowners. So increasing housing, increasing housing stock in the borough. Our request is that they are not to be used for rentals, not to be used for investors, to just kind of pluck from, from the premium of crop type of properties from the borough. We, we want to be able to increase housing, housing stock, bring those great new families into the borough. Once again, we're pretty excited about, each, each property takes from start to finish, I think you said nine months to a year?
He did.
From, from beginning to end. But I, I, I think, I think it could be valuable, I think it can be valuable to improve some of the properties that Code has to address very frequently, that Public Works has to abate, that taxpayers are kind of carrying in the meantime, until these properties become active again.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Public Works?
Thank you, President Monroe. I want to circle back first, before I give our rundown, about the traffic concerns, and our Safe Streets and Roads for All funding opportunity. So we've identified the high injury network based on PennDOT crash data, and we're trying to parlay any concerns that are brought to our attention in this medium or via email, but there is a survey on the homepage of the website, of the borough website, that I would like to call everyone's attention to, just so there's equitable access for everyone, it's not about who you know or your emails, hopefully everyone uses the survey, and we can parlay any of the comments that we get from the survey also into our grant application for Safe Streets and Roads for All. So thank you for coming tonight, but please also use the survey so I can refer back to it as well. We have yardways drop-off next Friday, and e-ways drop-off that following Friday. Flag Day is on Saturday, we are assisting the Police Department with all the barricades we, we need to supply, and all the help that we can give to make it a success. So I want to thank the entire team of Public Works, and I'm looking forward to, to Saturday. We have a digital speed sign, a speed detection sign on McDade between Bell and Church, so folks know how fast they're going. Again, regarding the controlling behavior, it's hopefully a good reminder, this is the speed limit, this is how fast you're going, slow down. So thanks to the Police Department for getting that up. Pico work continues, Turning Union then left onto Fairview shortly, if not already. Pico Gas restored the road at the 900 block of McDade Boulevard, and the one-way seems to be going well, as more people get used to it, and they see the four do not enter signs down at that intersection. But again, we'll speak with the borough engineer regarding that. And abatements are enforced, and we're getting proper documentation to the solicitor with that process. And, let's see, what else we have here? And Church Lane and McDade Boulevard intersections upgrade is complete, and we have payment, painting and improvements underway at Borough Hall, especially with Flag Day coming up. So I made sure they get the painting done at the facade, and at the circle, so. That's it for, for the report for, for me.
All right. Madam Chair, I have a question. Madam Vice President?
Okay, thank you for that report. With respect to the Yaden Swim Club, the old Yaden Swim-
The old Yaden Swim, yes, ma'am.
We had a discussion about the soil, and you were going to invite the residents?
Yes, we haven't devised an actual plan yet, so I, I'm not prepared to make a presentation regarding that, but there is an effort to, to fix the soil that we've got down there. And I talked to, to Michael about it, so we can get a, a piece of equipment that could handle all the soil down there. It'll be coming within the next two weeks. So by then, we should have some soil set aside for residents, but again, I'm not prepared to make that presentation at the moment. But the old Yaden Swim Club, yes.
But the plan for that swim club with respect to the mounds of dirt-
Correct.
-in there, the plan is?
To make it flat.
Level it all?
Correct, yes ma'am.
Right, okay. Quick question about, the resident brought up a point about the trash cans, the help with trash being thrown on the street. Is that something that we could have a discussion about, and to determine whether or not it's feasible?
I believe there should be a discussion about feasibility and controlling behavior versus what would help, and if we have the supply, I, I think anything is worth trying, especially to meet residents' concerns, so I think there should be a discussion.
Yeah, even if we just took one block and used that as a template, just to gauge if it's successful or not, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, because I just don't want the resident to feel like her concerns aren't being heard, okay? I want us to at least try.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
That's so funny.
That is, thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Public Safety, Police Department. This guy's wearing a suit.
Good evening all. I have to return it by 12 o'clock tomorrow.
Put you on the coverage, GQ.
The funeral, the funeral home needs it back.
Going on a prom.
A senior prom, that is. Good evening. In May, May this month, the Police Department responded to 1,201 calls for service, we issued 1,240 parking tickets, there were seven non-traffic citations that were issued, 80 moving violations were issued, and there was actually 12 criminal arrests this month. This month, we, we honored the police during Police Week in May, we honored, so I had the privilege of going to the Police Memorial at Rose Tree Park with Officer Danielle Pettyjohn to, for our officer that we lost in Yaden years ago. Sergeant Nick Tokenitz and I had the pleasure to have gone to Career Day at Bell. We actually had a great time, and I learned from the first graders that I'm bald, and that was, that was good, they're very observant, they don't lie, but no, we had a great time. Bell was, it's something that we're going to try to partner with them more, because it, it was really good. I mean, Nick and I had a, it was an unbelievable day, it was really, really good. And then, of course, rolling over there was our representative, Delco Has Your Six at Rose Tree Park, I know he had an excellent time, got out into the community. And I have a meeting scheduled in next week with Police Commissioner Bethel. I reached out to Commissioner Bethel because we're having an issue. Obviously, as the mayor points out all the time, criminals don't respect boundaries, and we're getting a lot of crossover between Southwest Philly and West Philly, and we really have to start communicating with Philly. So we're hoping to build some bridges, I'm actually going to be going to the new, the old Inquirer building where Police Headquarters is now, and we're going to try to partner and try to figure out what we can do, maybe collaborate with more open dialogue. I mean, we had a situation a couple weeks ago, and the mayor was informed immediately, we got a half hour call that, that an individual was shot and killed in Philadelphia, it was a gang-related shooting, but this person was being laid out in, at the funeral home. Got a half hour call, thank, and it wasn't even from Philly, the intel was from Philly, and that's unacceptable. And we had officers at the funeral home, and everything went fine, so if people were walking by and saw six cops and myself out there, it was just so nothing happened. There was, there was threats that they were going to come shoot up the funeral home. When I spoke to the funeral director, he said if I would have known that, we wouldn't have had it, you know, and I said, well, my apologies, we got a half hour call, and that's unacceptable. And kind of rolling into what the mayor was talking about, there's a lot of inaccuracies on this March, the No Kings Day. These are, these are individuals that are rightfully protesting what they feel. They're not, you know, hopefully they won't, it won't turn violent, but we're actually filing, I sent out to council, that's the latest information. There's nothing affecting Yaden, hopefully right now, Philadelphia is going to, I mean, you saw what happened in Philly the other day with Highway Patrol and the bike cops. Look, people have a right to protest, that's what this country is based on. As long as it's peaceful, you know, we're going to protect them. Unfortunately, some free speech, we have to protect people we don't agree with, but that's what we're here for. As long as they don't, well, or show, show their self, like, you know, and start destroying stuff, we'll protect them, so. But Flag Day, we have a great plan, Flag Day will be safe. As I pointed out, my wife and I, my wife is probably the smartest woman I know, no disrespect to anyone on the, on the dais, but we were down New Orleans a day before that happened, you know, just past New Year's Eve, and my wife's walking around looking, going, look how flimsy these barricades are, your, your Flag Day is a lot more secure than this, and then we saw what happened, unfortunately, somebody ran the truck through, and, you know, shot up the, so, Public Works, they're great partners, it will be secured, Flag Day will be secured, and we're going to have a good time. I, I don't know about the rain, we're trying to, we're trying to hold off the rain. I, I, I'll make a call.
Right, so can I, there are two things that I wanted to chat with you about, in order of these, it seems like there have been a lot of police chasing recently, and crashes are ending up here in Delco. Is that part of your conversations with Southwest? Because I know there was one in Upper Darby, there was one a little further out in Delco, and like Ridley or something?
And I'm going to give you my, my two, my two rules for this department, and I'll be totally transparent, I have two major rules. If you come in with a campaign hat, like a PSP guy, you're fired, because they're the ugliest hats, they shouldn't be in law enforcement. But the second, more important rule is, if you have to pursue somebody, as soon as you get to Philly border, hit your brakes, because what, that, no disrespect to that, the person, it's DA over there, he will prosecute the hell out of somebody if they make an honest mistake, whereas over here, we, that's going to be a conversation, like, it has to stop. I mean, people are, you know, coming into our towns, pursuing people, not going over the radio, we have a very stringent pursuit policy now, especially going through accreditation. To be, you know, as transparent as you can be, unless it's a forcible felony, we're not pursuing somebody. And they're, they'll pursue people, you know, and they'll say they're following people, but they're, you know, it's the, the juice isn't worse to squeeze when the pursuit, I mean, we see what happens, you know? And usually it's the innocent people that get killed in these pursuits.
Okay. And then along with public safety and these hospital closures and all of the trickle-down effects, I'm hearing sirens all the time. Just trying to get up Lansdowne Avenue, one afternoon, there were maybe, like pulling over for like five or six ambulances at a time, all of them different ambulance companies. So, you know, I don't know if someone advises them that maybe a two-lane road isn't the best or fastest way to get from one place to another, especially during rush hour when there are buses as well? Like, who kind of advises them of their routes?
That would be their departments, and that's where, that's their departments. And we, we have talked to our fire department and they're, they're, they actually have a great system in their vehicles now. I don't know if they explain, well, oh, what a shock, they're not here. I'm sorry, that was a fireman joke. No disrespect, that's why God made police, so firemen can have heroes. They actually have this camera system, it's unbelievable. You remember Taxi Cap Confessions? It's better than that. I mean, they can see you pick your nose, they take their seatbelt off, they, it automatically alerts them. If they pick up their phone, it automatically alerts them if they're speeding. So that's, that's controlling theirs, but with the, I agree with you, with the ambulance, I mean, I watched some of them drive and I'm like, they're going to need an ambulance for them because they drive like.
Well, it's not even just the recklessness, it's like they're, they're not going to get there.
Because of the routes.
If you're coming up, if you're coming up Lansdowne, which is, you know, one way each way, you know, you, you can only pull over but so much. You know, I saw a, a bus have to go up on a sidewalk to try to allow an ambulance to get by. So it just doesn't, you know, someone should advise them that those probably aren't the best routes because you can only park at C but so much before you're into somebody's living room.
And just on that note, with the, with the closure, we, I just wrote two grant proposals to actually get two AEDs, so we can actually have AEDs in our car at least all the time on the street. Because with the ambulance, I mean, it's, it's, we're feeling it, I mean, we're, we're feeling it. Which, when you asked me for my emergency report, that's going to be part of it, so.
Okay, all right, emergency management report?
Oh, any questions?
Any questions for the police report?
Two G. Lately, has, has the department seen many people violating the new policy of having handheld phones while they're driving?
Yes, and it's, it's a warning, the Paul Miller Law, it's a warning now. But eventually, it, it, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, we have. And we've been stopping people for that. And that's just, you can be stopped for just, basically what Counselor Trent's talking about is the Paul Miller Law just got passed. When you go in your car, the phone is supposed to be down. Even stopped at a red light, you can't check scores, you can't, you know, tweet, you can't, you know, Tinder stuff, like, that's it. Like, your phone has to be down the whole commute or you can be stopped, even at a red light. Even at, which is, and we'll put something out to that, and we're going to probably do a tongue-in-cheek video about it, like, you know, reading the newspaper as you're driving or doing your hair, eyebrows, you know, none of that.
See what happened when you did yours?
I had hair before I started here.
The other one is, right near where I live is like there's two stop signs where there's usually a car parked right at the stop sign, but there's no tickets. So, you know, whoever's doing the parking enforcement, right there at the corner of Bayard and Allen Drive and it, Allen Drive and Chester Avenue.
Okay.
There's two stop signs, and probably people parking to get the trolley, but, you know, they're right at the stop sign.
I'll, I'll make sure that's correct. And I had a conversation with my partner in Public Works, both of them here, and we're actually looking at getting lines painted to delineate now, like, hey, once you're past that line, that's usually the quote-unquote excuse, but we're going to, you know, we're working on that.
Thanks.
All right, emergency management report?
I have a meeting scheduled for, I know you, when I say meetings. We have a meeting scheduled for the 23rd with Trinity Health and Dr. Monica Taylor will be there to try to, because we have to come up with, they have to come up with their policy because what's happening now is, you know, they're overwhelmed, but they're getting 302 commits that are disappearing and now we're going to have, we have to go catch them. So we're going to have a real conversation, like, you have to come up with some type of room or some type of restraints, like, if they're 302 commit, they should, you know, you can restrain them and, because now we're going after them, so it's, it's becoming an issue. And they're having problems with trespassing in the hospital, so they're feeling it, they're feeling it.
Thank you. All right, next, Planning Commissioner, we'll wait for Counselor Trueheart to return. And Recreation?
Good evening, so we are now here at Flag Day. So we've been talking about the plan for several months and we are going forward with the plan. The planning was that we would start at 11:00 a.m. and we plan on doing just that. So the parade is going to start on Bailey and Commerce Drive. For your FYI, whoever wants to see the parade. Now, we only have a 24% chance of raining, so that, that's a sharp decline from what it looked like earlier this week, so I am very, very grateful for that. But we will have the parade, we're going to start at Commerce and Bailey, which is 555 Bailey Road. For those who are participating in the parade, please be there by 10:45 if you plan on being in the parade. And then we're going to come up Bailey and come around to Church Lane and then end up at Longacre. We have a whole action-packed day because the weather is cooperating. We have to make any changes, thank goodness, I am very, very grateful. Want to take this opportunity to thank everyone, all of our staff that helped me pull this off, our management, our Public Works, can't thank you guys enough for everything that you do. Roy, can't thank you enough, and our chief and our fire personnel, thank you. The schedule posted on our website, I don't know who that is calling, but the schedule is posted on our website, for those of you who want to know the flow, we have all of our higher, higher level officials are supposed to be there. We have our local officials, as you see, will be there. We'll have a lot of great speakers, a lot of music. Please tell your family and friends to come out and we will have our drones at Kirkfield at 9:00 p.m. So that is really all I have, just come out, enjoy yourselves. It's going to be a lot cooler this year than it was last year. If you were out there last year, you remember, it was 90 degrees that day. So it's going to be cooler, please dress appropriately for the weather and hope to see you all there. Roy, if you can stand up and model our new T-shirt for this year. I pick the colors every year, you know, I didn't want to do the gray again, so we're doing so. Please get a T-shirt if you would like one. They're on the second floor.
I like it, I like it.
Yes, so thanks, and our sponsors, thank our sponsors as well for all of your sponsorship. I'm sorry. So that's really all I have, guys, hope to see you there on Saturday and happy Juneteenth, brothers and sisters, as well, thank you.
And do not forget that our vegetable program will be starting on July 9th. Second floor, Yaton Borough Hall, please tell people, do not get there at 12 o'clock. Doors open at 4, so we're starting to have people get there two or three hours before it starts. But we are going to have 25 weeks of veggies and hopefully some fruit this year. So we start on the 9th, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Madam Vice President?
With respect to Flag Day and our website, can we ensure that our sponsors are listed on our website, please? That's it.
All right. So Mr. Nichols said that was the weather people calling. No, it was the weather people calling saying Flag Day is going to be amazing.
Oh, the only thing we did change, and I did want to say this, we won't have the water slide. It's not going to be hot enough for that. So I said now, let's scratch the water slide, but we'll still have the huge, big bouncy castle and the concessions that come with that, water ice, pretzels, popcorn. And not the same vendor from last year, Mr. Nichols wanted me to make you aware. At no cost to you all, but the food trucks, there will be a cost. I do want to let you all know that, everything else is free. And volunteers, please check your emails, should have gotten an email from myself, Bea Crystal, about where you will be, and if you have any questions, you all know how to get in touch with me. Thank you so much.
Okay, one more, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Because I can't let Counselor Beatty have the last word. We were informed that there was a misspelled street on our sign on the lawn of Borough Hall. That was a pure mistake. I was initially informed that there wasn't enough room on the sign for all of the letters, but I later learned that the letters had to be smaller, they needed a smaller print and they were able to fit all of the letters. It wasn't because someone was incompetent, it was because someone just made a mistake. We're human, okay? I was called to the carpet for not doing my job because I missed that misspelling. I was part of the spelling bee for five years straight in elementary school. So it was a mistake, but it is now corrected. So thank you. If you have any problems or concerns that need to be brought to our attention, bring it to our attention. We're now always on social media, I go on social media for giggles and smiles. I don't go on there to really learn about anything because it doesn't teach me anything. So if there's something that really is concerning you that the borough needs to be aware of, please contact one of our administrators. Mr. Cave is always available to have an open dialogue with anyone to address their concerns. But don't crucify us over a simple mistake, that's all it was, okay? Thank you very much. I'll see you on Flag Day and happy Juneteenth.
Can I say one last thing? Because I am going to the last one. I want, no, seriously. No, I just want to say thank you all for May 20th. I want to thank my colleagues for all their help, want to congratulate the mayor, my colleague Tony Trueheart, and my buddy, former counselor Ron Francis for a very, very successful election. I am excited and honored to serve you all for one more term, thank you all so much.
Without further ado.
This is really quick, Madam President. Hey, listen, guys, well, wish everybody a happy Father's Day on Sunday. Don't forget about your fathers.
And you get rain for Father's Day.
So happy Father's Day.
Happy Father's Day, fathers.
And I have one more thing. Motion to adjourn.
So moved?